Button to turn it on. You're on.
We'll call the city council meeting to order.
All councilors are present.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no special orders of the day.
Correct.
So we have public hearing. And at this time, we'd like to ask any citizens that would like to speak to step forward.
Citizen.
I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. There's no public hearings. We'll go to citizens' participation. So at this time, any citizens that would like to speak, we'd like to ask you to step forward, give your name and your address. But I have two individuals I'll call up because they filled out sheets prior to the meeting. And then anybody else after this, please, we'll give you time, come up. Our first one, but again, let me just repeat, we'd like to ask anybody who comes up to not make any disparaging comments or attacks on anybody and to keep their comments to three minutes. So our first speaker is Francesca Gleisner. Did I pronounce that right?
It's Francesca.
Francesca, thank you.
Close enough. I'm here tonight to talk about.
Your name and address.
Francesca Gleisner, 907 Forest Street.
Thank you.
Boy, Wisconsin. I'm present here tonight regarding a situation that I have found near and dear to my heart. The situation regards a property located at 1115 Summit Avenue that I am very interested in purchasing. I have had my eye on that property for quite a few years, but I knew that there was an elderly man that lived there. The man died and no one, and I had no idea who had taken over ownership. Then I realized, I received a letter from the city regarding the fence between the property I own and the property that's, is 1115. The city had taken ownership of that property. The city is going to tear that house down now. The city has no interest in selling that property to me or anyone else, from what I've been told. Why would the city spend the money to pay the back taxes and then spend the money to have the house torn down just to end up with an empty lot that needs to be shoveled in the winter months and then mowed in the summer seasons? Who is paying for that? I thought it was the city of Boyd's best interests to bring in revenue from property taxes. I don't see how having an empty lot that has to be maintained, maintained, is going to profit anyone. In my own personal home, I do not participate in drugs or any other legal activities, so there's absolutely no way that I would ever rent a house to a tenant that would do those things. I have put too much money and work into the property to, into my property to allow those things to go on. We own the house next door that we purchased in 2014. We had quite a few issues, but I feel after a lot of hard work that there was a quite, it's a quite presentable property inside and out. I am confident that I am a responsible property owner and would like the opportunity to be given the chance to purchase this house and restore it to the condition that it should be, along with the fact that it will be placed on the next year's tax roll and give the city more revenue. I see it as a win-win situation for everyone.
Did you want to speak, Mr. Gleisner?
Oh, she did very good.
Okay.
We just wanted to have a chance to maybe take a closer look at it, maybe get a stay on tearing it down. Do we have a chance to maybe negotiate?
Well, we have your names and address here. Hopefully, we can have somebody from the city contact you very shortly then.
That'd be really nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Darryl Adams.
My name is Darryl Adams. I live at 1431 Biddle Street in Beloit, Wisconsin. I am experiencing a major problem with water that is in the back of my yard as a result of excessive building on the other side of the street, on Division Street adjacent to my property. Because they have raised the grade, particularly in the storage facility, it has left my yard to become the swell for all the moisture and the water and everything that goes on back there. My trees are leaning, some of them are falling over, some of them are dying. And I have tried to resolve this with city engineers and stuff like this. I talked to Dave Pennington and Bill Frisbee, but then I was told that nothing would be done about this as a result of advice of some attorney or something, is what they were telling me. But what's going to happen here is these trees are going to fall down. On wet years, when it's really bad, the water will go all the way up beside my house. It ends up in my basement. And I've experienced water problems before, but after the building of all of these properties has become considerably worse. Now they're building another building that is behind the tire shop, and it's just making it worse and worse and worse. And it's reaching a point where last Sunday, I went out and I mowed my grass, one more for the season, and you could smell the stagnant water in the soil. Even though it's going down into the soil, the water level is not that high at this particular time, it has gone down into the soil and is producing a stagnant odor back there. The mosquitoes are practically unbearable. And I need something done about this. I need, I need, I asked for them to come up with a solution for drainage, and they won't do it. There were, they did not put in permits for, or the permits that were to the building. I don't think the drainage was done right on that. And my property, the neighbor to my north, he's experiencing this problem. The guy over at the Honda shop has experienced this problem with it in his property, and it's, it's gotten out of hand. It's gotten to the point where if we get a wet year, where it gets out of hand, then what's going to happen is it's going to flood out my basin. I mean, I got mold in my basin right now because of constant water. I've taken pictures of the water standing back there off and on over the last year. It was there for the entire year. And on some situations, I have pictures of the grass where it gets so high, it's as tall as I am, and there's no way you can mow it. There is not a machine that you can get your hands on that'll mow this. And it's, it's useless, worthless, wasted property with the, with the rocks coming out of the ground and everything else. And it's turned into a swell, and I can actually show you where that swell is. You can stand in that spot and you can see it clearly, what is exactly happening here. And it's just, I mean, a first grader could figure this one out. And I need a solution to this problem.
Okay, Darryl, we have, we have your address and your name here, and we'll have somebody from the city get ahold of you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
David, if I can, I know we're referring this to city staff, but if we can get some kind of follow-up email for these two instances of what we, what we talked to them about, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, the meeting is still open for other speakers, so first, first call for anybody who would like to address the council. Second call, third and final call for citizens' participation. This part of the meeting but closed. We'll go to the consent agenda. Go ahead.
All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any council like anything at this time removed? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by, uh, Preschel, seconded by Slaniker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero. Ordinances.
Seven A is a proposed ordinance to establish two-hour parking time limit in Ironworks South Parking Lot. This is second reading.
Second reading. Is it, are there any questions or is there a motion? Well, this is the second reading.
There is no new information, so we'll hold it to the question.
Are there any questions for Mr. Boyson? Is there a motion?
Move or approve.
Moved by Levy, seconded by Duncan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero. B.
Seven B is a proposed ordinance to add signal locations of, to index of special locations at Gateway Cranston and Gateway Colley. This is second reading.
Are there any questions for Mr. Boyson?
Mr. President, can I request that the staff is allowed to give a brief summary for the folks at home who are watching and would like to know what the item is about?
Could you give a brief summary, Mr. Boyson?
Yes, this item, the city of Beloit recently completed signal up, the signal upgrade at Cranston and Gateway and is in the process of constructing the signal at Colley and Gateway. The Traffic Review Committee reviewed the issue during their July 25th meeting, and the committee voted four to nothing in favor of adding both locations to the index of special locations. That's sort of a technical term of just saying that instead of having the stop before you go is you've got to obey the traffic signal. So that's really what this is saying. It's just putting in the schedule these legal bases for obeying the traffic signal. And that's really the gist of it, in short, I think.
You move.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Preschel.
I'll second.
Seconded by DeForest. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero.
D is a proposed ordinance to remove parking on the north side of West Grand Avenue adjacent to 715 West Grand Avenue. This is second reading.
Do you want to summarize?
Yes. City of Beloit received a request, or I'm sorry, the city of Beloit raised the building, removed the building located at 715 West Grand Avenue. Traffic Review Committee reviewed the issue of this parking at their July 25th meeting and voted in favor of the proposed parking restriction, four to zero. The reason for it has to do with the demolition of the building where city crews removed existing driveways and required, and repaired and replaced the curb and sidewalk. The parking, or rather, the driveways previously resulted in a prohibition of parking just due to normal clearances from driveways. So really, the raising of the building, the removal of the driveways resulted in potential for cars to park in a way that would obstruct the vision. So that was the purpose of this no-parking recommendation.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
I just, I wanted to make sure that this section where we're removing parking, it wasn't used for parking previously because of the way the driveways were configured. Is that correct?
That's right.
It's been brought to my attention that teachers from Hackett School are using this area to park, but presumably they weren't parked, able to park in this area in the past.
Yeah, because of the driveways, they would not have been able to park in this area.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Boyson?
Just a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Preschel.
Just, just to be clear, this is on the, on the street on the north side of West Grand that would have been adjacent to where the old Triangle Building was. It's not the parking lot across the street. It's not involving any of, anybody's current use of any parking areas. Just so that, because people are apparently confused at the overlocation, I don't know why. It's, but it's just to maintain sightlines. Prior to that, there was a curb cut that allowed people that, in that building to park off the street, and that's all gone now after the building's been removed and we have a normal terrace there. So just to clarify for anybody who might have, be wondering, what is this about? I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Boyson? Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Preschel.
I'll second.
Seconded by Duncan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero.
D is a substitute amendment. It's a proposed ordinance to remove parking on the south side of Public Avenue adjacent to 424 College Street. This is second reading.
And this was requested from the Meals on Wheels organization to remove parking along Public Avenue in the area of their pickup and drop-off location. Traffic Review Committee reviewed the request at their July 25th meeting and voted in favor of the recommendation and request at a, for, at a vote of four to zero. And this is essentially as presented last meeting. There was a mention that we had a very minor omission in the resolution, not only specifying no parking in this area, but there's particular hours. So the hours, as previously reflected in the report, are now matching the, the recommendation ordinance being from the period from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00, 1:00 p.m. And of course, this just accommodates the Meals on Wheels operation, as we often do with businesses and other enterprises. We try to accommodate the current, the current business. Now, we did provide, I think there was a correspondence that we provided notice to the ordinance-required area. I think there was a request to contact one additional business, which we did do, and there was no objection.
Correct. I just wanted to mention that we did follow up, as council had requested, and expanding that notice a bit, and there has been no objection to the limitation of parking.
I also want to note, I drove by, I drove, driven by a number of times. I think every day I drive by, and I'm very familiar with that area, and there's sufficient parking on public because the churches aren't in session most of the time that they're picking up meals. Maybe on Sundays there are for a while, but there's significant parking on College Street, on the hill. There is parking for more than just the staff behind. I drove back there, there are at least 12 spaces in back. There's an empty parking lot next door where the Odd Fellows used to be. And there is significant parking on East Grand in front of, across in the billiard parlor, whatever it is. So, and there are not that many people in Family Services for council in any one time. It's, it's a come-and-go type situation, so I see no significant problem. Is there other questions, comments?
Yeah, yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Just about the, about the process. It's been a couple of days since I looked at the staff summary and I believe Mr. Fleisch's response to my request to see if Family Services, that is right next door, had been noticed or not, and he said that they weren't. And I guess I'm confused by the parameters of our notice because of the business right next door wasn't noticed and consulted about how they felt. I'm, I'm trying to understand the process here.
I don't believe they're right next door. I think, I believe they're around the corner.
Family, yeah, the parking is on public, not on College.
Okay, but the Meals on Wheels site is right there, and then Family Services is right next door.
You don't use that door. They use the door across from the church, Sheila, to bring their food in and out. There's another door on College.
The, the building that they're in.
Right.
Is right next door to Family Services.
WGZ is there also, yes.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand in terms of process, when we say we notice and we notify the surrounding businesses to get their input on how they feel about it, I'm concerned that going forward, the process we use, because here we have a building right next door to the Meals on Wheels building, and they weren't originally notified. And so I'm trying to understand, how do we notify, to what extent? I'm just, I'm just trying to look at process going forward because we might not have a city council here in the future that says, hey, did you check with the business next door?
Oh, yeah.
And so I'm concerned about process here, if that makes sense.
And in looking at the message from our city engineer, my understanding is that that property is not immediately adjacent. And so I would need to look at another map to determine, but, but I don't believe that they're immediately adjacent. Regardless, we did reach out to them. There are other restrictions that if we are impacting less than one full block, a smaller radius is required for notice. So unless the council wishes on a future agenda to take up the policy of the radius within which you want to contact other property owners and have formal notices sent, I think that would probably be the next approach if, if you, as a whole, feel that the current notice isn't sufficient.
Just a comment.
Go ahead, Council Press.
This actually goes back to how I got involved in city stuff back in 1987. There was at one time, an ordinance drafted and passed that required a certain distance, you know, it was a radius distance from an affected area to be contacted if there was construction. I don't know if this would apply to that or not, but, and I don't know if that's been changed or altered over time, you know. This, the distance I'm looking at here on the map would be within those boundaries of that old ordinance, but I'm, again, I'd have to look at the details and get back to us, you know.
And again, the specifics, as I understand it, in 11.35 to 11.40, is that because this is less than a block in length, the requirements for notice are different than if it is a block or greater. I can tell you that anything in the downtown business district is, they're always contacted, and that happens through the DBA. But in regard to parking in other areas of the city, the Traffic Review Committee does not routinely contact all properties or properties within, I can't provide the distance, I apologize off the top of my head. But, and I was relying on this information where my understanding is that that other business was not immediately adjacent to the parking area that was requested for restriction, but rather around the corner.
If the parking were right next, Sheila, the parking wasn't, they weren't asking for parking exemptions on College. It was around the corner. It was a lot further away. There was, my whole point in making the statement I made before was there was plenty of parking in other places. The last place anybody want to park would be around the corner up there. So it in no way impacted them.
Okay, and I can appreciate that in this instance. My question is about process, and so I would like to revisit this issue as a council about the radius by which we notify adjacent business owners, property owners. I have, over the years, had concerns about the degree of that radius and have had to ask to make sure that any property owners or business owners that are nearby have been contacted for their input. And so I would like to see us discuss putting a system in place that makes sure that we, we've done a good job of notifying folks so they know about it and can provide input. And in this case, it's fine. Family Services said it wasn't going to be a problem. I'm talking about the process. And so I would like to take you up on your offer and consider us discussing how we go about notifying. This has been an issue that's come up on council many times over the years about notification, so I would love to visit that.
You conscious, Levy?
This is a question for clarification, and Sheila, are we just talking about notification for the businesses that the city needs to notify, or are you talking about the DBA as well?
I'm talking about anywhere in the city.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure staff is clear on the direction that we want them to go. So if we're just talking about the downtown, we're talking about the entire city, but if we're talking about the downtown, are we talking about the separation of what the city has to do or what Shauna has to notify as well?
I'm not talking about giving them direction. I'm asking that we revisit as an issue and look at our ordinances related to notification and see if we think that they're conservative enough and how far we're reaching people that are impacted by the decisions we make.
So you're saying in the entire city? I just want to be clear, and what they'll know, okay.
And it would be my preference if we would perhaps schedule this for a future workshop so that staff could get some direction on what the consensus of the council is before we start evaluating all of our ordinances. We have notice provisions in extensive numbers of ordinances. This is exclusive to parking restrictions, and for parking restrictions, it's immediately, it's currently notice to immediately adjacent property owners. So I think perhaps this would be a better topic for a workshop. We can better define the scope of that potential conversation and then come back with additional research.
I would say until we talk about it at a workshop, we continue to use common sense and reason, and every, every case is going to be different. So I would hope that we can continue to trust our staff to use good common sense and reason.
If I could just clarify, I'm not talking about questioning or entrusting our staff. I'm talking about making sure that the residents that could be impacted know about the decision that's happening right in their immediate neighborhood. So it's not, it's not being critical of the staff. It's saying, I mean, when I look at where the Family Service Building is, it's right around the corner. The Meals on Wheels is on the corner, they're right next, around the corner on the other side, and if they haven't been originally notified, that's concerning to me. You know, and it's worked out fine. They said they were comfortable with it, but I don't want to have to ask every single time an issue like this comes forward, who was notified? Was a person next door notified? How far out were they notified? And then I, I don't like when residents come to me and say, I didn't know about that, and I just live three houses away, or I just want to make sure that we're doing due diligence and notifying residents so they have the opportunity to provide input. I'm not being critical of staff in this case.
So we have another workshop item there. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second by Henry, seconded by Preschel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero.
D is a proposed ordinance to establish time restrictions for terrace parking at 819 Clary Street. This is also second reading.
Mr. Boyson?
The city received a request from Shelley Cusson, board member from the Little Turtles Playhouse, Inc. They're the adjacent property owner. The Traffic Review Committee reviewed the topic at their October 3rd meeting and recommended by a vote of five to nothing in favor of establishing a two-hour time limit on the weekdays between 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. The property was recently renovated to allow the Children's Care Center, which is able to serve up to 48 children between the ages of zero to six. The terrace parking stalls would be limited to 30 minutes on weekdays between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. to allow pickup and drop-off activities to occur. Alternate overnight parking would still be in effect in the area due to the limitation of the timeframe of the 30-minute parking restriction, and construction of right-of-way is not needed because the terrace parking already exists.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Forrest, seconded by Preschel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero. F, please.
F is a proposed ordinance amending the future land use map of the city of Beloit comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation for the property located at 631, 640, 654, and 657 Bluff Street from R1B Single Family Residential to C1 Office District. This is also second reading.
Questions? Motion? Moved by Slaniker, seconded by.
Before we move on, I think we want a brief presentation.
Sorry. Go ahead, Julie.
So 640 Bluff is a 11-unit multifamily historic structure. When that was foreclosed on by the bank, we thought we should try to take a step to try to see if we could get that rehab and reused because it's not an easy building to make into a single-family house. So we basically looked at what was on the ground and created this district, which essentially goes from St. Lawrence to Locust on both sides of Bluff Street, and then also includes Grinnell Hall. And we did notify all of the entities that are part of this comprehensive plan amendment, and all were supportive of the request. And if this is approved, then we will begin the step to actually rezone it to the C1.
After I apologize to Julie, I'll ask if there are any questions. Any comments?
I would make a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Preschel.
Julie didn't say it, but I will. It, it actually makes what's currently there more conforming than it is now. So this is a good move. So I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Any else? Is there a motion?
Sorry, I read your motion.
You have Slaniker and Hendricks.
Slaniker and Hendricks, first and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero. G is first reading.
Yes, it's a proposed ordinance to amend Section 3.15 Sub 3 of the Code of General Ordnances of the City of Beloit pertaining to the distribution of room taxes.
Mr. Miller.
Good evening. So the City of Beloit has an ordinance in place that imposes a room tax on retail rooms provided by hotel and motel operators. Currently, the proceeds of such taxes, when collected, is apportioned 10% to the City of Beloit and 90% to Visit Beloit. The apportioned amounts have been in place since the inception of the ordinance in 1987. Those have not changed since then. And so we're requesting that the ordinance be amended to increase the city's portion from 10 to 15% and reduce the Visit Beloit portion from 90% to 85%. And it's on the, oh, sorry.
No, I thought you were done.
I am. It's on the agenda for first and second.
Manager Luther.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that this staff recommendation in no way reflects the positive relationship we have with Visit Beloit or the great leadership and success that we see happening with Visit Beloit. In fact, it is due to the rather extraordinary growth in our room taxes that we thought that this reapportionment would be appropriate, that this was a time in which we could alter that percent sharing without reducing the revenues that are going to Visit Beloit to support the, the services that they provide. So I just wanted to provide that additional basis for the recommendation and be prepared to answer any questions. We are asking that this be considered for first and second reading so that its adoption, which is incorporated within the 2017 budget, would be finalized as the budget is adopted this evening.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Miller? Sheila, go ahead.
I would like to make a comment, and I'm honored to serve on the Visit Beloit board, and I'm so pleased with the work of that board, and thank you, Celestino, for your great leadership. And it has been remarkable, the growth that we have in our tourism in the city of Beloit. And I have to admit that when my, my father came to visit me, not that, long ago, he had a hard time finding a vacancy, which I was thrilled about, he wasn't thrilled about, but I was. So we're doing great work, and in, in talking with Celestino, it seems that this won't affect their ability to continue to do great work. So I just wanted to echo those sentiments. Thank you.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Miller? Okay, so we need to suspend the rules and?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend rules first.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Prashil, seconded by Slaniker. All in favor of suspending rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the rules are suspended. So then we?
I'll move on to the line.
We have a motion. Okay, the motion is made by DeForest, seconded by Hendrix. To go in the merits, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes again seven zero. Thank you, Eric. Appointments?
There are none.
Counselor, activities and upcoming events. Sheila, DeForest.
Thank you. My mic on. Thank you. First, I would like to say thank you to all those who came out to help take care of the 1,000 light bulbs that will be going up in downtown fairly soon. Thirteen people turned out, and with all the hands on deck, it only took over an hour. So thank you for their, for fantastic work. And many of them are city employees who came in to chip out, to chip in a hand for help. Pam Lee threw up Justin Presny, Maggie Jenke, Andrew Jenke, Rick Barter, Daniel Clifton. We had three Beloit College students, which I don't have their names, so I apologize for that, but thank you. Jim Cook, Shawna Elamine, Kylie Cribs, and Crystal Cribs. So thank you so much for coming out to help get those light bulbs ready. They'll be up soon and looking beautiful in our downtown. I would like to thank Alex Morgan-Roth, who will be leaving to move to a different community. He's been serving in our Planning and Building Services Division and want to thank him for all of his work. And I'm so thrilled with the Turtle Creek Confluence groundbreaking that occurred. Wonderful collaboration between Beloit and South Beloit. Lots of folks have worked very hard to see this happen, where we can reclaim that section of Turtle Creek and make it a beautiful place to visit. Plans for Environmental Center will be going in there. So just thrilled at the continued attention to our waterways. And finally, I would like to express my condolences to the family of Dave Schreiber. Ironically, Dave Schreiber and I served together as, as members of the founding council trying to get the federal designation for the Rock River as a national waterway. And he was very instrumental in us developing a plan. We had a 500-page-plus plan we had to put together to submit to the National Park Service. He served right with us many, many hours. A handful of us worked on that plan to get that designation for the Rock River. He's been instrumental in helping with all of these activities related to the waterways. He's done so much to serve our community and was actually working with Therese to have our official dedication. So I just want to share my condolences and my, express my gratitude for Dave Schreiber and all he's done to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
I had an opportunity to go to the farmer's market and see all the kids dressed up in their unique costumes for the last farmer's market of the season. It was very nice, very good attendance with the kids. Also had an opportunity to attend the NAACP banquet. It was a very nice banquet, very informational, good speakers. Some of the young people presented poems and did readings. That was really creative. And then this Thursday, I'll be attending the Racial Justice Conference through the YWCA. And I just wanted to say, I appreciate positive publicity for Chief Liggett and the work that he does. He got recognized helping in Rockford, and so that was very positive. I appreciate all the work that he does and going out of his way to help strangers. And also the positive publicity for the Police Department with Chief Sabowski. And I also had the pleasure of working with Alex, who's leaving the Planning Department. He was always a pleasure to work with on the Landmarks Committee. So that's all.
Thank you, Counselor Slaniker. Counselor Duncan?
I'm honored. Okay. I just want to say congratulations to the five people that were inducted into the Hall of Fame at the Beloit Historical Society yesterday. Dr. J.B. Elzy, Roger Brighton, Frank Marsden, Sally Kramer, and Fran Frozen. They are very special people that have contributed a lot to our community as educators, business leaders, and community advocates. There was a nice profile of each one printed in the newspaper also. I also want to mention that the Merrill Community Center closed on November 1. Our agency had existed in Beloit for 27 years. I would like to thank everyone that supported us throughout the years. We will be forever grateful. And I would like to encourage everyone to please vote. If you haven't taken advantage of early voting, the polls are open tomorrow from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you have specific questions, you can go to the City of Beloit website for further information or contact our City Clerk's Office. When I went on the city's website, I saw a sample ballot for 2016. So you may want to view that ahead of time as well. And remember, if you don't vote, you won't have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Prashil?
Well, thanks for mentioning the Confluence. Thanks for mentioning the Confluence and all that's going to bring. It's an amazing project to see it start to actually build over there. I think it's going to end up changing things in our relationship in this historic area that in ways we can't imagine right now, just a lot like what Beloit 2000 did, Beloit 2020 did. And what, nobody saw what we've got now coming. We just saw that there was something great on the horizon. So I think it's the same kind of thing with the Confluence. It's really good to see. We have two new businesses in downtown Beloit, and they both report they really like being here. One's Chic and Unique, and the other one's Fresco Fajita. And I encourage everybody to go down and check them out. There's not much in Chic and Unique that I'm interested in, but I'm sure my wife could find something I should get. Anyway, and they really report, they report they really like being here. And that's the other thing about being downtown. It's constantly, I say this every month and I'm, every meeting almost, people really like it here, and we're really making an impact. And a broad base of people from all over the country are impressed with our downtown, our city, our spirit. Last week, the college had people coming in, checking out the college, and I had an opportunity to talk to probably about a half a dozen of families that were in town. And it was just amazing to see their reaction, that they had seen something unique here they hadn't seen somewhere else. So that was pretty cool. I also was able to attend the, and take pictures of, the demolition of the smokestacks, the candy cane smokestacks north of Beloit came down on October 27. And I was out there, got pictures, and it was one of those things that I told myself, if I can be there, I'm going to be there. Because those things, that was how you knew your home. And we all grew up with them. And it's just, it'll be different to look out from the overlook at Big Hill Park. But it's, it was bound to happen eventually. Anyway, we are keeping the big smokestack downtown, the last smokestack left in the city, in a city built on smokestacks. So it's good to see that the college is going to do that. I'm really, really happy about that. And finally, real quick, I spent the weekend dodging photographers at Beckman Mill and Big Hill Park. And it's, they're tripping over each other, and I'm trying to stay out of their backgrounds. Lots and lots of photographers. I ran out of fingers. Anyway, just want to mention that. It's great, and it's just great for our city. Thank you.
Mark, you did a very nice job recording history out there. Those, I think everybody in Beloit, as we used to drive here, would see those two red candy canes, and it's, but you recorded it. Thank you.
Yeah, I was really, really lucky to get that phone call telling me, hey, get out there.
Did well. Lieutenant Levy?
I would like to thank the City Clerk's Office, Lori Stotler, and her staff for answering tremendous amount of questions from citizens over the last few weeks and their efforts as we get ready for big election day tomorrow. One thing that I am very pleased of, a lot of times, we see questions as they appear on Facebook or in the paper, or we hear questions. So over the last few weeks, I know I have been inundating her email with a bunch of questions to help citizens be informed as they go to the polls tomorrow. Please, I'm asking everyone, as you go to the polls, let's remember that the poll workers are citizens of Beloit that have truly volunteered their time. They're not getting rich. They get a little appreciation. I call it stipend or something. But they are citizens of Beloit. So when you go to the polls, I'm going to ask everyone to please be patient, be friendly, be polite. If you have any questions or anything that you're questioning, each site has a chief inspector. Go to that person, find that person, get your questions answered, and they will be in direct contact with the city clerk. So if they can answer your question, your questions will be answered. But we want everyone to please go out, be respectful to the poll workers, because they're, they're doing the best that they can with the amount of activity that's going to be going on. So we ask you to be patient and support them. And it doesn't hurt when you leave, as they thank you when you leave, to turn around and return the favor of giving them a thanks, because whether you realize it or not, we go cast our votes and we go to work and go home. But they're there usually wee hours of the morning to late, late in the evening. So while we're at home watching the election, they're at home still calculating. So they put in a long day, so let's be kind to them. Thank you.
Counselor Hendricks?
I too got an opportunity to attend the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet, and I was happy. I was a proud mama because the, or three of the students that were presenting at the banquet were my Help Yourself students. So I was just like, peacock moment. But, and then I got an opportunity to serve on the Government and Politics Career Panel at Beloit Memorial High School with our city manager and Captain Molland and State Representative Mark Spritezer and Rock County DA Dave O'Leary. The students had excellent questions. They were engaged. They were asking questions that we were like, oh, let me think about this. We were, I was prepared, but I'm like, oh, you guys really care. So that was, that was a good opportunity for them to get more information about government, about politics, and then a way for them to explore career exploration. So those are the only two things that I have in addition to, what was already said?
I too was able to go to the NAACP banquet with our city manager, and that was an honor to be there. And good evening. And also with our city manager, last week, we were able to, Lori was able to address the state and federal officials that were there at the first diamond exchange opened in the state of Wisconsin, just off Reed Road, off I-90. It was a very foggy morning. We somehow made it there, and it was quite an experience. Couldn't even see the diamond, but, because they were still working on it. But it's the first one in Wisconsin. Apparently, according to the federal officials, there are 70 in the country. But it's a new exchange that is supposed to facilitate traffic in and out of Beloit and Janesville. And we'll see how well it works. But the officials were very positive about it. Yesterday, I was again honored to be at the Hall of Fame banquet mentioned by Regina. And I too want to add my thanks to Lori Stotler for doing a wonderful job getting ready for this election, which is no small event. I think nationwide, over 35 million people voted already. And I think in Beloit, we've had a couple thousand at least.
Almost three.
3,000. So thank you for a nice job. And tomorrow will be an easy day, right? I'll be glad when tomorrow's over, because then people will not be stealing yard signs and stickers off cars anymore. Finally, I want to thank Regina Duncan for the last 27 years of operating the Merrill Community Center with grace and dignity and helping so many people. I've had a, more than a firsthand look at it. I was on the board for a number of years and been by often. And a lot of people, a lot of young people were served there, and adults, everything from bingo to just support in their daily lives. So we're going to miss the Merrill Community Center and Regina's leadership. So thank you again. Okay, that's all I have. We'll go on to city manager's presentation.
There are no city managers' presentations this evening. So under reports from boards and city officers, 11A is a resolution approving WISCORE's cooperative agreement between the State of Wisconsin Department of Transportation and the City of Beloit.
Mr. Boyson?
This agreement will authorize the public works staff to accommodate a WISCORE's facility at the wastewater plant. WISCORE is an acronym which stands for Wisconsin Continuously Operating Reference Station. WISDAT is developing the WISCORE's network throughout the state of Wisconsin to provide information needed to increase the accuracy of field-collected GIS data. The WISCORE's network is a system of GPS receivers permanently fixed at sites located in cities, counties, and villages throughout, throughout Wisconsin that provide positions on points of interest in real time instantaneously. It's primarily a surveying type of aid. As a result of meetings with the, and discussions with Public Works and Water Resource Division staff, it's been determined that the proposed installation can be accommodated without difficulty. The city's participation will mutually benefit both the city and the state. Eventually, they're going to have a licensing fee system, and the city would have one free licensing seat, which will be nice. The fiscal impact is negligible, and staff recommends approval of the agreement.
Are there questions for Mr. Boyson? Is there a motion?
Selah?
Moved by DeForest, seconded by Slaniker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero. B, please.
E is a resolution approving a parking lot use agreement between the City of Beloit and United Church of Beloit.
Mr. Boyson?
This agreement will authorize approval of the parking lot use agreement between the City of Beloit and the United Church of Beloit for parking space near Grinnell Hall. Pursuant to a review by the United Church of Beloit of the established practice of Grinnell Hall patrons parking on their adjacent parking lot, the church has proposed to formalize the continued use of the parking lot through a, through the establishment of a parking lot use agreement. The initially proposed agreement has been reviewed in a mutually acceptable final form, and the agreement has been established. The parking lot use agreement extends until April 14, 2019. The agreement provides for the city to pay $1,850 for the parking lot use in 2016 and $2,600 annually thereafter during the remaining period of the agreement. The agreement will require the city to pay $1,850 for the parking lot use in 2016 and $2,600 annually thereafter through the end of the term of the agreement. For 2016 and 2017, this expense has been covered by the existing 2016 budget and the proposed 2017 budget. Staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Questions?
Representatives from the church here, questions for the church.
And Mr. President, I simply wanted to, to mention how grateful we are to the church for their many, many years of just allowing the, the free use of their parking lot. The city has very limited parking immediately adjacent to Grinnell Hall. And as their programs are becoming increasingly popular, which is a wonderful problem to have, it is becoming more and more difficult, especially for individuals who might have more difficulty walking into the building. They may or may not have a handicap sticker, but it is certainly much more convenient for them to have the parking across the street and in the church's space. And we recognize that that really isn't a no-cost benefit to us. They do have the cost of maintaining that space. And, and we are clearly the predominant user outside of their church activities. So rather than have a handshake agreement, we thought it was appropriate to establish a formal written agreement that would then, you know, be in effect. And we appreciate their assistance in negotiating those terms and, and having something we could bring forward to you for recommended approval.
Thank you. And the council thanks you also. Sheila, Counselor DeForest?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to echo that gratitude. I do have a question. Just wanted to make sure if you could explain for the public who's responsible for maintenance and who will incur liability. And then I'm just noticing now, in reading through the agreement again at glance, that there's a typo on page one of six of the agreement in one D, under term and payment for the terms. I don't know if that needs to be corrected before we vote on it, or if we can just take care of that later.
Let's see, that's on page?
It's page one of six of the agreement, under term and payment, item D. I'm sorry, just seeing it now.
Yeah, that wouldn't require formal amendment. That's a Scrivener's error.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, Mr. Boyson, if you wouldn't mind just sharing with the public, who's responsible for liability?
Well, as City Manager Luther had mentioned, the maintenance is something that the church does as the owner. And then the liability, maybe I should defer to Beth, but I know there's legal language about the liability, and it's been resolved between the city attorney and the church attorney.
The city does, will have insurance coverage for any of its patrons' use of that parking lot.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Just wanted that information for the public. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Boyson? Do we have a motion?
Some more.
Moved by Duncan, seconded by Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero. C, please.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a Wisconsin Historic Preservation Fund sub grant.
Ms. Christensen?
In 2015, the city had hired Legacy Architect to update, to do an update to our intensive survey. That update, that updated intensive survey identified a district along Milwaukee Avenue and Emerson Street. The State Historical Society is encouraging us to apply for this grant, which would allow us to do the necessary, which would allow us to hire a consultant to do the necessary work and research and everything to get them designated to be part, to be on the National Register of Historic Places. The grant is due on November 11. We would not hear about awards till February 1. the grant is due on November 11th. Um, we would not hear about awards till February, March of next year, and in the meantime, our plan is to meet with the neighborhood. Um, we have scheduled a meeting for November 29th at seven o'clock at Todd Elementary School, and we will be sending individual notifications to every property owner that would be in the proposed district. Um, Andrew is also doing, um, calling people that he knows that live in that area because you have, um, Rook McGrath and Anna Kelly, um, Brad Austin, um, Mr. Yonkey, um, and a number of others that we're familiar with, um, just to see if they would maybe, um, at least for some of those, like, maybe Anna would put a sign in her, um, front yard so that we can get the word out and so people understand what it is. Um, this would not, um, if, and the state historic, Joe DeRose from the Wisconsin Historical Society will be there for that meeting. Um, the intention is not to force this down their throats, but to provide some information, and if, um, more than 50% of the owners aren't agreeable, you don't go down that path. So there will be some public steps, um, before we get into the grant, um, so we should know by the time we get the grant whether we're moving forward with it. Um, but the intention is to, um, get them on the register so that they could take advantage of historic preservation tax credits, um, and just to identify how special and unique this area of the city is and to celebrate the history. Um, and so this grant would allow us to pay for that research. It would be a hundred, a hundred percent grant funded.
Questions for Ms. Christensen?
I do have a question.
Counselor DeForest.
So just to be clear for the public's sake, um, this would enable those homeowners to be eligible for the historic preservation tax credits, but at this point, there's no obligation that they would be under the authority of, um, the historic district guidelines or approvals that currently exist for other historic districts in the city?
There's a process to be, um, designated a landmark site, um, or a historic district, which is in the historic preservation ordinance, um, which outlines a public process, which includes a recommendation by Landmarks Commission and then public hearings, um, where they're invited to come out and speak for or against it. Um, at this point, because as you can see in the staff report, that this would not all be completed till 2018, we're not even contemplating that at this point in time. Um, we're just going down this, I mean, the State Historical Society is just kind of encouraging us to kind of move the next step to allow, give homeowners this benefit, which they don't currently have.
Okay, and so the homeowners could, could enjoy the historic preservation tax credit benefit and not necessarily have to opt to do the district piece. And then, just because I don't know the process, would the city council have to vote on that? Would they have the opportunity to vote on that somewhere down the road?
On the, if it became part-
Probably a district, yeah.
Yeah, if it became a district, it's a council decision. So the council has to designate the district, um, under the ordinance. So the Landmarks Commission can't designate the district. You designate the district, and then, um, basically the ordinance then gives Landmarks Commission certain duties and powers within that district.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
And that's a separate process.
Yeah, that's a separate process.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Christensen? Is there a motion? Moved by Slaneker. Seconded by Duncan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero. Strategic Plan, Senator Luther.
Thank you very much. It is my pleasure to present to you the recommended strategic plan for 2016, late 2016, uh, throughout I anticipate to be approximately same time 2018. With that in mind, it is my intention to bring back formal quarterly reports to the full council for public view, um, to express our progress in each of these six goal areas and to further refine specific performance indicators within each of those goal areas. Historically, the city has had a strategic plan that went into a great level of operational detail for each of our departments and divisions. And the shift with this particular plan is to, um, focus more on large overarching goals and having those goal areas, um, drive, uh, the city's strategic plan rather than how a department may be organized. Because as you know, we are working more and more across departmental and divisional lines to solve larger problems, and we're partnering with organizations outside of the city to address those larger problems. And so I think this is a way to better reflect, uh, the goals that we have and, uh, how we will work to, to move towards, um, bringing them to completion. I also want to let you know that this is a living and breathing document. Um, I certainly don't anticipate taking this document, having it sit in stone for, for the next two years. What I would anticipate is as times change, as situations change, we would have an opportunity, again periodically and at a minimum on a quarterly basis, to revisit where we're at and our comfort level. Um, I think the goals are very solid. I don't anticipate any change really in those specific goal areas. Um, however, some of these strategic initiatives, how we measure our performance, those are things that we can refine. Um, there's been a great deal of debate and discussion over the vision statement. Um, I choose to focus on the mission, and because I'm, I'm a manager, that's probably, uh, not unusual. Um, I love that, the fact that our mission is very simple and succinct, and it is to provide outstanding public service, period. Uh, that is why we exist. And so, uh, as soon as this is adopted, uh, the next steps for me would be to begin meeting with employee groups, um, to start talking about how every individual in this organization fits into the strategic plan, is a public servant, and, uh, how they perform their job responsibilities impacts, uh, these greater goal areas. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Counselor Preschel.
I just want to say thank you for this wonderful document. Um, I love it when we can distill down these kind of things into something that's understandable, readable, and will have a broad understandability to other people. That's, you know, it's, it's not a bunch of bureaucratic gobbledygook, and I really appreciate that. I, it's so refreshing, and I do see this evolving. And, um, and, and I do want to point out too, these are not in priority order. They're just six items. And they all have equal, well, you know, whatever. They're not meant to be item number one. Anyway, uh, I really, really appreciate it. I think it's a great document. Take us forward and, and, you know, bring, bring the future to us. Thanks a lot.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Um, I also appreciate this. This has been a long time coming, so thank you. It's, uh, wonderfully succinct, easy to understand and digest, and really helps us focus our efforts. Um, I just wanted to share, and I hope this doesn't feel like I'm being too particular, but I'm still struggling with the vision statement, um, because I, the, the piece that's really hard for me is, um, the vision statement for the public, in case you don't have it in front of you, is our vision is to become a place anyone could proudly call home for a lifetime. I love the notion of being proud to call home. I'm struggling with the "for a lifetime." We have a lot of Beloiters that are only here for four years. We have Beloiters that come and go, um, and they're proud to be here. They love being here. We want them to feel welcome here, but maybe this isn't their home for a lifetime. And so I'm a little worried that it feels to me like kind of a, almost a locals kind of, uh, I don't, I'm trying to think of a nice way to say it, but I, I want it to feel like a community that is welcoming of people as they come in, and people come out, and sometimes they return, and I, I feel like it's more fluid of a community than this. And so, um, I'm struggling with the "proud to call home for a lifetime." Um, so I'm just wanted to express that and make sure that everyone knows that those of you who are transient, maybe only in Beloit for four years for Beloit College, or here for a year or two, whatever the case may be, that we want you to feel like this is your home while you're here, and you're proud to call it home while you're here, and we'd love to have you come back if you leave. So, thank you.
Counselor Levy.
And I would just kind of flip it around. I guess it would be no surprise that Sheila and I are on different sides of the fence, but, um, the four years that they're here for Beloit College, I would, one can say that that is their lifetime here. But also, I look at it as a place that's, people who may not live here, visit here a couple times, may say, you know what, I'm about ready to retire. I'm about ready to settle down. Where can I go live out the rest of my life? We went to a great city called Beloit, so that's a place that we could go. So one can look at it either way. So that's the way I was looking at it when I saw that, you know what, this could be not only for the locals, but the ones that's outside the community that's visited a couple times and said, this is a great place to call home. So when I get ready to retire, I want to go live in Beloit, you know, live out the rest of my life. So it's just my take on it, so.
I'll, I'll quickly add my take, and that is, I, I think, I think, Mark, you said it very well, and Sheila amplified it. Sometimes simplicity is very powerful, and, and I think, uh, I've been reading these for years in the school system and other places. This is one of the best I've read, and I will echo, as I, as you're, you were talking, Sheila, I listened to your point, and that was well taken, but didn't a young lady named Sheila come here for college? She's still, I saw it like Kevin. I said, if you-
I wanted you to say it. I didn't want to say it out there, Dave. I'll say that.
It's, uh, it's a, as I read it, it, it's, could be a town that you could come to for one year, and as you leave town, like William Holden left in Picnic, you could say, I should, could go back to that town and spend the rest of my life there. It's a good movie. You should see it sometime, Picnic. You saw it. But anyway, no, I think it's, it says it all. I, I hope we don't get nitpicky and take words out here or there. I, I dislike what it says, and I just, to me, it says, and I'm just one person, we have seven different opinions, but, uh, if a year's good, a lifetime is better. So I'll leave it at that. I'll be quiet. Other comments, questions?
If I could just follow up by saying, I hope the people that are here forever long to here, they're proud to call Beloit home.
Thank you. We agree.
Leave it at that. Thank you.
I did want to mention, and, and there's been some very educational conversations about, uh, grammar, and, um, whether it is grammatically correct or not, the intent behind using the word "could" is in recognizing, no, no, quite, it's been a really entertaining, interesting education on the, on the word choice, um, but it kind of lends to the conversation that you're having now, to the extent that it's helpful. The intention, um, I shared multiple drafts of the vision statements as we were working through that with a number of different individuals. I wanted to, um, broaden some of the input we were receiving, um, to see how someone who wasn't in the room while this was being discussed might perceive that statement. And interestingly, um, the two particular individuals that I was talking with are, um, very rooted in Beloit, very, um, strong leaders in Beloit, and they don't happen to live here. These were not people associated with our organization. And their input was that while they may not live here, they could, and they would be proud to. So I think, um, the, the rationale was whether you live here or not, and regardless of the time period that you live here, anyone could be proud to call Beloit their home, potentially for a lifetime. So I think that was the, for the public's understanding, the intention behind the, the comment. Um, I think that regardless of your choice, we're headed in a, in a really great direction, and I, I think that it's, um, something we can all be proud of.
I'm very proud of you for saying that, so thank you. That was really well, well put. I, that was awesome. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions, is there, is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Levy, seconded by Preschel. All in favor of adopting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero.
E is a resolution approving a 2017 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Ms. Christensen.
Got two people leaving.
We have two leaving, okay. They both have a-
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Christensen.
Okay, so the CDBG process begins with a CDA, um, in late August, early September, where they heard presentations from all the applications. Actually starts in July, and you guys have your public hearing, and then we make applications available. But, um, the CDA, um, took their time and listened to all the applicants and asked good questions. Um, and then at their September meeting, they, um, recommended a CDBG budget, which was shared with you in October, um, and you hold a public hearing on it, and then we all received the announcement that the Merrill Community Center was closing. Um, so the CDA, um, went back to it at the end of October and reviewed the budget, um, and essentially divided up the CDBG budget, the public service portion proportionately among the entities. So the theory behind that being that the CDA had given a lot of thought to how they were going to fund the public service agencies. So they gave some more and some less, and we wanted to keep those proportionate shares, um, to kind of to reflect, that's what we had recommended, and then the CDA did, um, endorse that request. So, um, in your packet tonight is that recommended budget. I know the staff report said I had both in there, but, um, in the end, I couldn't make it fit in the table. So what's in front of you tonight is the actual CDBG budget, um, with the proportionate increases, um, as well as the city projects, which were presented at your last meeting. There's also a sheet with the funding priorities that were met by each of the applications, um, because you established the local funding priorities in July. And then there's two sheets which give a summary of the applications that were submitted, so that if you're not familiar with the program, some of them have changed their applications slightly over the years. Those are also included in your packet. Um, also on your agenda tonight, besides approving the budget, is approving this document, which I know it's a huge, long document. Um, but this is essentially consistent with the five-year plan that you adopted two years ago. So there's nothing new in here. Um, this is just continuing what you had, um, when we initially approved that consolidated plan, and you got that presentation in 2015. Um, so CDA did recommend this new budget, which is included in your packet, and did recommend approval of, um, the annual plan. We did publish a notice in the Beloit Daily News and State Line News, did not receive any comments. However, you did receive, um, comments from Ian Hedges from Healthnut, um, at your public hearing, um, stressing the importance of their program and how they reach vulnerable populations, and they provide free prescriptions, and, um, how they are seeing a great demand for those services in Beloit.
Questions, comments? The monies that was, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Dave.
The monies that were destined for the Merrill Center were, could you explain what happened to those monies?
Um, we essentially divided them on a proportional basis. So if you received, if you were planned to receive more money, you received a little bit higher proportional share, where if you were receiving less, you received a lower. So based on the proportion you were, we divided that 12,000 amongst those agencies.
Thank you.
So they all got a little bit more than we had originally planned.
Just for clarification too, we spent nearly five hours, wasn't Regina?
Yeah, in meetings, over, of course, the two meetings, reviewing all the applicants and applications and hearing their, uh, presentations and then discussing them. So we spent a lot of time discussing how to get to the, where we got, and then Merrill Community Center was removed from the equation. And rather than revisit the whole allocation process over again, we looked at the proportioning and thought it was eminently fair, and we voted unanimously to accept it and go with, go with that. So that's how that, that came about.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for acceptance?
Move approval.
Moved by Levy, seconded by Hendricks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes five zero. These two, come back, we'll go to F.
11F is a resolution approving the 2017 Home Investment Partnership Budget.
Ms. Christensen.
Um, the City of Beloit is part of the Brock County Home Consortium. As part of that consortium, we receive 28% of the consortium project dollars and 31% of the admin dollars for 2017. Even though there's not a federal budget, we are estimating the consortium will receive $475,000, which is what we received this year. Based on that budget, the City of Beloit's share would be 133,000 for projects. We are also estimating receiving 100,000 in home program income from repayment of loans, um, and then 14,725 in home administrative funds, which can be used to pay for the staff time related to the program. Um, on September 28th, the CDA did recommend that the city's dollars, um, be used to fund the city's housing rehab revolving loan fund for owner-occupied properties on a citywide basis and/or new construction projects in the West Side Target area. Um, on October 17th, a public hearing was heard before this body, um, and no comments were made by the public. Um, the program income estimate is conservative based on kind of what we're seeing in loan repayments. Um, however, 1009 Central is complete, um, and being listed with a real, a local realtor. Um, so we expect that to sell, which is 100% home funded. We took the city manager through it last week, um, and we're hoping that we would complete 349 Euclid by the end of the year, so that would also be available for sale. So if those houses sell, um, the, we're using the road team to list the house, and, um, they were very optimistic about the sales. They really liked the way it looked. So I think, um, we'll see some additional program income, which then will allow these programs to continue. Um, so then if, the numbers are estimates, um, but the, um, action step just says that the 2017 city home funds, which, whatever we receive, um, will go to the city's housing rehab loan program for owner-occupied rehab projects citywide, which we continue to see coming in, um, and our new construction projects in the West Side Target area. And I will comment that we are, you know, for a while there, we, it was slow go on repayments, and we're starting to see those pick up. and we're starting to see those pick up more and we're starting to see more people eligible for installment loans versus our, a good chunk of our loan portfolio being deferred. So some of those changes that council made over the last several years to the program, we are seeing benefits from that change, so.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Christensen? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by DeForest.
Seconded.
Seconded by Slenicker, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven to zero.
11G is a resolution approving the 2017 Business Improvement District Operating Plan and Budget.
Ms. Alameen.
Thank you for having me, sorry, I'm very sick today, but we're gonna make this work great. So I just wanted to start, I only come once a year, so I wanted to start just by giving you an outline of what the downtown Beloit Association has been up to for the last nine, 10 months. So what we've tracked so far in 2016 is 17 new businesses, two of which Counselor Preschel mentioned, but we do have a new one that's going to be coming by the end of this month, which is Game On Bar and Grill, that will be hopefully coming by the end of the month, so we're excited about that as well. Fresco Fajita House has just opened in the last couple of weeks, they've got rave reviews on Facebook already, so if you haven't been able to check them out, it is the old location of Mama Lou's. And then She Can Unique Clothing and Furniture Boutique went in and did a whole complete remodel of their space, made lots of improvements and it looks amazing and the community is really loving their store. So it is their second location, they do have a location in Burlington, Wisconsin already, so they're really successful. So far, private investment has reached over $69,000 this year. We have given out facade grants of over $2,500 total to date, we do have a couple that are pending, hopefully we'll get some applications here in this month that we'll still be able to do before construction season ends. We have given out over $1,100 in sign grants, again, we have a couple more applications pending that hopefully we can do this year. We do host over 50 days of events, the majority of those events are just mainly to entertain the community, we wanna bring people downtown, we host 26 days of farmer's market. I am sad to report that we did not get the USDA grant that we applied for, thank you for allowing me to apply for it. Unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to extend farmer's market to be year round, but Bushnell and Peck has, yet, thank you, but Bushnell and Peck has contacted us and said that they would do three weeks again this year, so the first three Saturdays in November, one already passed, they're doing an indoor farmer's market at their space, so we are helping to promote that. They're still continuing the SNAP program even for those three weeks, so they're using our SNAP process. We filmed Around the Corner starring Miss Lori Luther in that, so we did do that this year. We are premiering that during BIF 2017 and then it's going to be actually shown on TV for the world the first Saturday in March, so we're gearing up for that party, so you'll all be invited. We've continued the beautification program throughout downtown, including all the hanging baskets, the urns, and we maintain those, we have our staff who maintains those. Again, we do accept SNAP at the farmer's market, we only started that four years ago when I came on board and it's continued to grow. So far this year, we had over $3,400 in SNAP benefits. Again, if we would've got that USDA grant, we could've made that even more successful, but we're hoping that we'll make strides in 2017 to continue that. We do have a strategic plan that we adopted just a couple of years ago and I just wanted to show this infographic, just so you guys can understand really how close we are to pretty much all of our goals. We have had well over our anticipated $10 million in private investment, we are halfway to our goal of 75 new residential units, which is upper floor housing for downtown and ground floor housing, if anybody wants to build any, we still want some. And then we are above our goal in 45% increase in social media activity, we skyrocketed that just in our very first year of our strategic plan, I guess we should've set a higher goal. We are improving public spaces, we've added five bike racks, six reindeer, two benches and four sculptures that emulate the farmer's market, of course. And then we've improved community engagement and that is just basically with our downtown businesses, we have over 170 businesses, so we continue to keep that engagement going. We do hold bi-monthly meetings with all of our businesses are invited, any of them that show up are welcome. And to say what's coming next, we do, as I mentioned, have Game On Bar and Grill coming to downtown. We only have three empty storefronts throughout the whole district, that is 310 State Street, the old overflowing cup, 635 Broad Street, which is the old staff on site next to 615 Club, and 128 West Grand Avenue, which was formerly all of Century 21, took up two spaces and they've now smushed their space, so one space is available. For 2017, we're continuing our goals to improve board and committee member participation, connect with the businesses, add and evaluate to every event, add sponsors to every event, update the website continuously done by yours truly, so if you ever have any suggestions, just email me. And then collaborate with the vision partners, which is still strong today, even though the Greater Beloit Chamber of Commerce did move out to Iron Tech, we still continue that relationship. So to get to the meat of our budget, we do have for 2017 in your packet, you'll see our operating plan, our revenue is anticipated, budgeted for $150,610, estimated carryover for 2016 would be $74,265.31. Our net assessment, which we are not raising the assessment and that hasn't been raised since 2007, so it'll remain at 3.88 per thousand, would be $112,426.24. Total income would be $337,301.55. Our expenses are organization $94,194, economic restructuring $2,250, design $29,500, promotions $136,800, for total expenses of $262,744. In your packet, you do have our operating plan as well, along with my report. Again, we're not proposing this year that we change the assessment, but what we are proposing is that we add one property to the district and that would be what is commonly known as the Riverbend Site, it's owned by the City of Beloit, it is right next to the transit station, it's the vacant property. The property lines were moved and the street was moved a couple of years ago, can't remember exactly, but with that, we would like to include that, so you also do have a draft map and it is the parcel that's striped in orange. Any questions?
Counsel Preschel.
I feel bad for your cold, I'm finally over.
Thank you.
I was surprised that you don't have the, as part of the bid, the property on, between Bushnell and Public where the church is coming down for retail and office spaces there.
We have contacted them, unfortunately, we didn't have time this year to do that, but they are on our, excuse me, on our list for next year, along with the castle, they have requested.
Yes, that whole block, it looked like it should be there for some, except for Scoville, it doesn't make, but, you know, it's just churches, but anyway.
We are working on it, we did contact the property owners and we're hoping that 2017 they'll both be added, or 2018, they'll both be added.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Keep growing.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Moved by DeForest.
Seconded by Duncan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven to zero, thank you Sheila. Try not to be sick next time, okay? Jeez, we schedule you once a year.
Really?
Okay. H, we're gonna, go ahead.
11H is a resolution approving the operating budgets appropriating funds and levying property taxes necessary for the operation and administration of the City of Beloit for the year 2017, including the 2017 capital improvement budget, the Beloit Public Library budget, and further authorizing the city treasurer to spread the city property tax along with the apportionment certified for other jurisdictions upon the current tax roll of the city.
We'll have a start by Eric, we'll have a conclusion by our city manager on this one, go ahead Eric.
Thank you. So last but certainly not least, we finally get to the end of this process that began back in April when we started the capital improvement budget, so since then, we have had a many number of meetings with city manager Luther, as well as all the different department and division directors, as well as with city council at a workshop that we had last month and we held the public hearing three weeks ago today, so we are at the final stages of the budget process, which now lies in your hands. Before you is the resolution to approve the 2017 capital and operating budgets. And then just really quickly, before we get to that, I do just wanna send a big thank you out to all of my staff who have put in countless hours and many months of work getting this document prepared and put into a nice neat little package for that everybody can and read and understand. And it's a nice little 500-page document, but it took, it took a lot to get there and so I do just wanna thank my staff for that, so that's all I have, thank you.
Before we have a motion, Counsel, I mean, manager Luther.
Actually, may I go after you about a minute?
Okay, okay. Questions for Mr. Miller?
I just would like to echo what you said about your staff and the presentation, this was my first budget cycle and I dreaded it, I'll admit that. Of all the things I didn't look forward to when I became a city counselor, this was it. The process of looking through 450 pages of, you, you made much, much more pleasant than I expected, the workshop was wonderful, everything went really well, I was very impressed. And by the way, while I was doing this, I was also, I looked up Superior's, Superior and Lacrosse and I looked at their documents, because I was trying to find out about mill rates and sell that stuff all compared, and I was looking for border states, because I thought we should look at border states, or at least I should, to educate myself. And your presentation was way over here, way above what they did and much easier to read, much easier to, to look through and, you know, you guys should really be proud of what you did, so thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
I just wanted to let Counsel Preschel know that we've received awards for our budget documents, so I think three years?
Oh, a lot more than that, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it is a wonderful document.
Yeah, I would say they wanna steal your temper, but they can't have our people, no.
Exactly.
And they have to pay our hotel tax when they come here.
That's right, they do.
Also, if, if it would be okay, I would like to thank our city manager for balancing our budget without really feeling the ping at all, I mean, we really had very little in the way of reduced services and so that's quite a task and so I really want to give you kudos for that, it's incredible when we have declining money to work with that you made it work and so thank you for that, we're so glad to have you on board.
Good point Sheila, and part of that was due to the fact that city manager and others sometimes did two jobs, they filled in for people in positions that were not filled and that, that's accounted for significant savings. So again, your points are well taken, thank you. Do we have a motion at this time?
Move or approve.
Moved, moved by Levy, seconded by Hendricks, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven to zero, thank you Eric, thank you Lori. Lori, you had a few comments.
Now, yes, I, I wanted to wait until it was final.
Don't tell us something bad.
No, 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 this is, I was, I was pretty, no, no, I was, only prepared one, couldn't do it, couldn't do that. This organization has undergone a remarkable amount of change in the past 18 months and despite how it may appear, preparing a $30 million general fund budget and a $96 million total budget is really a monumental task. I appreciate all of the thanks that you've given to staff, but frankly, this council is making this process smooth. You do your homework, you ask thoughtful and challenging questions, we had 100% attendance and participation in our workshops. It's incredibly important to have that kind of political leadership and I can tell you that I have peers across this state and across the country who are dreading their adoption nights and looking at two and three in the morning meetings debating issues that in my opinion should've been vetted weeks and months prior to that event. So I want you to know how deeply I appreciate your engagement throughout the entire process, your respect for the process and ultimately this unanimous approval. From a staff perspective, I do want to say thank you to all of our department heads and division heads. Long, long gone are the days when we've adopted a budget and our work ended. We recognize that our budget is a moment in time and that we have to be constantly prepared to evolve and react to the realities that we face and if revenues don't come in at the rates that we are anticipating, or if unanticipated expenses come up, we have to react to those situations and we're seeing that more and more as time goes by. But I also want to think, because I don't believe he takes enough credit, our finance director Eric Miller has been bar none the leader of this process, of the data, of working through the complexities of our revenues and anticipating where we're going to be and finding solutions when we experience obstacles and I am so grateful for his leadership and for all of our department heads who recognize that days of status quo budgeting are, are gone. We're not in a position to, to do that and they have been extraordinarily helpful and are seeing our organization from a big picture perspective and not just the piece that they may be immediately responsible for. And having directors come forward and express as much as they want and need to fill vacancies, that they are willing to find other ways of providing services in order to give us an opportunity to balance the budget, I, I think that's exceptional leadership as well. So thanks to you and this is the first time in my career that I can say for two years running, this has been incredibly well done and you have been very thoughtful and I appreciate your support.
If I can speak for the whole council, I think it goes without saying, we all appreciate as counselors, having strong leadership from the top down and hiring a good team and having, assembling a good team is critical to any organization and it, it makes our jobs as counselors a lot more enjoyable, having a great team to work with, so thank you. Eric and the rest, what's up next?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. All in favor, motion is made by Hendricks, seconded by Preschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes, thank you, good job.
Lori Duncan, you're a really good parent.